All right. It is 6:30. We will call our Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I will start with Roll Brooks. Chuck.
President.
Brian.
President.
Thomas.
Chair.
Melissa.
Chair.
Rob. We have a quorum. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
We have potentially one thing to add to the agenda, just as a discussion. We have a representative from the Hockey Association here to talk about their plans for Aspen Park. It can either be a public comments or an actual item, however you would like to treat it.
You want to sit through a meeting, sir? Good. You're number nine, then. All right, with that addition to the agenda, you still make a motion?
Yes, second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2023 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is public comments. Anybody wishing to address the commission may do so now. Unless you're on the agenda, then we'll get to you. All right. Well, all we have is discussion items tonight, so... Here we go. Item number six, Neighborhood Business District.
So, the one addition to the Neighborhood Business District is we, as staff, were looking through it, making sure everything that's supposed to be there is there. And one thing we did add was exception number four. That language is both in GB and the residential districts, so we figured it should probably be in here as well, especially for larger lot projects that might... This with depths on their lots, this might come into play depending on how the city engineer...
What page are you on again, Patrick?
On page 11 of the packet.
Okay.
So this would apply for, like, that interstate project up on Split Rock?
Potentially, if their lots are deep enough that they need to utilize a private street rather than a public street, this specifies the private street. Setback is 15 feet measured from the edge of the sidewalk easement to the structure. So it's a little bit different, so we just wanted to make sure that was covered as well, since you might run into a situation where NB utilizes private roads.
Does engineering have minimum requirements for access easements?
I believe so. I wish you was here to speak to that, but I believe so. The city's currently reviewing its engineering design standards, so I imagine that's in there. But if you want to take a look at them, at the last City Council packet, they were in there and it was 500 some pages long, so they might be uniquely your interest thing compared to everyone else, but...
It's fantastic.
I believe there are standards for that. Tammy, you would be the expert on that, but...
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
My concern is, I understand it in those situations where, you know, that project by the interstate, that's all a private drive, no different than a public driveway or a public street. But what happens when they access through the parking lot of another business?
So, one, it kind of comes up later on the the change to the off-street parking definitions. We did add a definition of private street mutual access easement, making it different from parking lot mutual access easement. So the 15-foot applies to private street, but not parking lot. So this is a way to try to recognize they are different things. And the definition of private street mutual access easement is something Tammy and I worked on. The last little bit there was, we changed public street, dedicated public street to dedicated right-of-way. And that was a Tammy suggested change, so... And generally, that private street would generally fall on lots without frontage, but I'm open to your thoughts on the last couple of words as well. We do have lots in town. If you look at the Shopping Plaza with Brandon Spirits and all those, where the middle lot there does not actually have an access on the street. It's the parking lot easement that runs through. So we do have ones where you wouldn't want that to be considered a private street. It would still have the front setback, but not off a private street. So we're trying to find a solution to clarify things. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
I think this also applies to Woodland Court, Carol's Place, have a private street and we use this particular ordinance under R1.
There are a couple of landlocked lots in the industrial park that we're figuring out how those work for their access as well. There's an apartment building up near one of the churches and a couple industrial lots.
Okay. Well, and I would...
So the differentiator here is the difference between just a standard mutual access easement and a private street mutual access easement, correct? Is that the intent here?
Yes.
Or as in, in the situation of a private street mutual access easement, that's almost like a, it's like a public street, but it's privately owned?
Correct.
Yes.
So the people responsible for the private street would be responsible for its maintenance, its snow plowing. It's not a city street.
But those are marked and taken care of with private road.
This is private street.
Yep. Anything else, Brian?
Yeah, I'm just thinking from an enforcement standpoint and...
There's always, there's always guys like me that try to find a loophole in codes and ordinances and stuff.
This language currently is...
I'm sure somebody will, so...
Yep. This language currently is, is verbatim, it should be verbatim, if not very, very close to what is already in the residential districts as well as GB. So, if this is something we have to take a closer look at, we certainly can. The other thing, after talking to some developers, they wanted to talk a little clarification on the requirement that the building size be measured off buildable area versus lot area. Since...
So that, I actually talked to Tammy about that, and she... You know, we try to do things to make life easier on our staff and not harder on our staff. And she said it'd be way easier to figure the total lot area versus the buildable area. I don't know if Paul has any thoughts on that, but...
I agree with Tammy on that one.
You agree with Tammy on that one? I mean, I know that, like, in the Sioux Falls zoning code, when it comes to accessory structures, they have math required, and we just say one building. So we try to make it simpler on our staff. So if that seems to make it simpler on them, I think I would rather go that direction. I mean, we are maintaining setbacks all the way around, so it's not as if we're sacrificing any of that.
Just for clarification for the audience, lot area is your total area. The lot buildable area is your lot area minus the space taken up by the setbacks. So it would be the donut area in the middle. So that, that's the buildable, that's the difference between buildable area and lot area. So they wanted me to bring that up to you just to get your thoughts and whether that is a requirement you want or not. I haven't perused through everyone's zoning ordinance, but that might be somewhat unique wording for one district and one town. I'm not sure of any other city that uses that buildable area measurement. There's, it's possible some do. I don't know of any. It's possible Sioux Falls does since, in some area, because their zoning code is confusing. And I'm not an expert on it, but they do all sorts of things. But not that I'm aware of, no one else has that buildable area measurement.
I did, when I did some research, I did see a few municipalities that did use the buildable area. And that was when I was looking at neighborhood businesses. Here again, most of those municipalities were much larger than, you know, Brandon or even Sioux Falls. So, I can go either way on it. I'm just curious, ask the rest of the group up here, if we change it to buildable area, do we keep the 33% or do we make that a little bit smaller to compensate?
I mean, I would be okay with a 33%, that's just me, but...
What, what page is it, what I see in there?
Um...
10 to 11. Pages 10 into 11. It's in the table.
So we could change that, Brian, would we change it too?
I'm just, I'm just asking, because honestly... Sorry, I don't have my wife here to click me. Honestly, I don't think the 33% will ever probably come into play. And the reason being is you take your setbacks out of the, out of the equation, and the rest of it's basically going to be parking lot.
Okay.
Just when you, when you start running the numbers, for a typical business which is one parking stall per 300 square feet of building, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna be at that 33%. So basically, if you take your setback distances, a developer can cover that entire area with building and parking lot. And they will not, they will not get denser than 33%.
So you're okay leaving it?
So I'm just, I'm just putting it out to the rest of the group here, to, something to think about, that if you take the setbacks out of the equation, everything else can be hard-surfaced on that property. And you'll still, you'll still need your 33%. Between, between your building and your park, your parking lot, you're gonna have to build that much parking lot to cover 66% of the property.
Yes.
So...
It wouldn't change the square footage of the buildings that we have there.
That will never have a...
No.
Okay.
So, what's the language we want to go with? This, so next meeting, these are scheduled for public hearings. Planning and zoning will have a public hearing, and then it will go to the City Council for a public hearing.
I'd recommend we strike it out there.
Strike what?
The percentage, because it's not, like I said, it's not going to come into play.
Oh, so you just want to put in building size and...
The reason I'm saying that, if you have, if you have 300 square feet of building,
Yeah.
you're gonna need 600 square feet of site improvements for parking lot. So you're never gonna get a higher density than one, a three to, a two-to-one ratio. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
For 300 square feet of building, you're gonna need a parking stall. A parking stall is gonna take 600 square feet of site. And so right there, you have a 33% ratio.
So since we are maintaining the setbacks, and we have a cap on the building size, you think that maybe it's just not necessary?
It's not, yeah, it'll never come into...
Does that make sense?
So we...
It'll save, it'll save all the stuff.
The proposal is to leave the 15,000 square feet number and eliminate the percentages, or the 10,000, eliminate the percentage.
That would, yes.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Well, leave the, leave the 33%. I'm sorry, strike the 33%.
Strike the 33%, yes.
Does that also apply to the 50% for the 10,000 square foot?
What would be easier for you guys to administer and achieve the same intent that we're looking for? Like I said, we allow one accessory structure. We don't make you do algebra to figure out how many you can have.
If we eliminated the 33%, would the other category serve any purpose? Because then what would the difference between 10 to 15 be based off of? Would it just be maximum of 15? Because the percentage is what differentiates the two. Without the percentage, you just have one category up to 15,000.
Well, and I would say that you could leave all the language and just strike buildable area out of it. Would that be easier?
Either way, staff will find a way. Melissa sat down doing some math...
I know.
All week trying to sort out what measurements for buildable area. Either way, we can find a way to make it work. It's all up to what you think is the best standard for this district.
I would say that if you leave the numbers and the percentages and strike the buildable area, if that makes the math easier to figure out, then I would say do that.
What is the percentage jump, what is the percentage jump then?
It's the same, 33 and 50.
Instead of the buildable area...
And you just strike the buildable area. So the buildable area is the lot minus the setbacks minus, so I just know that in talking to staff, it seemed to be a little harder to figure that out.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I mis, I misworded myself.
Oh.
So, parking stall is gonna take 300 square feet, sorry.
Could we get your microphone?
So typical nine-foot wide parking stall, 20-foot deep, with a double dry aisle is gonna take nine by 33 feet or 300 square feet for a parking stall. So for every 300 square feet of building, you have 300 square feet of parking lot. So that's a 50-50 ratio.
Okay.
I apologize when I said the 33 will never happen, the 50 will never happen.
Okay. So then I would say leave the percentages and remove the buildable area portion.
Since you put it that way, and 50%, I'm gonna go with what Tim suggested. I think removing the buildable area is better for them.
Okay. Okay.
Is that the general consensus, how you want the public hearing draft to read?
Okay.
Brian looks troubled.
His gears turn harder. What other, what other questions you have for us, this private street mutual access easement language, or...
Yep, that's on the the updated draft. That's, it's just the definition.
And we're all okay with that? Yep? Okay.
Would you change that?
We just wanted to clarify the difference between a parking lot mutual access easement and a private street mutual access easement. Given the language we're adding to the district, the, there is a setback for a private street mutual access easement, but not a parking lot mutual access easement. So we wanted to make sure they were clearly defined as two different things.
That is really complicated. Kind of my head hurts.
Mostly because the private street, and Tammy will correct me if I'm wrong, that would generally probably require sewer and gutter, whereas the parking lot wouldn't, and the private street would require sidewalk, whereas the parking lot would necessarily would not, right next to it.
We want the parking lot mutual access easements, because then it limits the amount of access points off of our roads. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. Are we good with this? Brian, you good with this? Are you ready to move on to item number?
Do you have to make a motion?
No, because this is just discussion. So what they'll do at our next meeting, is at our next meeting, Patrick, we will have our first public, or our public hearing for P&amp;Z?
Correct.
So, okay.
And the new draft will be as discussed today. It will be presented at that public hearing. It'll be presented to the public, and the public can make comments. In the meantime, if you want to send me comments in the mail, by email, if you want to give me a call, hopefully I could accurately convey what you say over the phone. But your best bet is always just to show up and and explain to them what you like, what you don't, what could be better. But if you, if you can attend, certainly written comments are welcome as well. And then they would go to the City Council for much of the same process and continue as a normal ordinance would after the City Council public hearing.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else have anything? All right, item number seven, off-street parking definitions. This sounds fun.
That's the private street mutual access easement definition we talked about.
Oh.
That's the difference to the proposal for the ordinance dealing with the definitions.
So we already covered number seven with number six. That's beautiful. It's very efficient.
It all relates together.
Nice work. All right, so I think we're done with that one, too.
So it'll end up looking like the paper you handed out instead of what's on here.
Correct, it will have that additional definition.
All right, item number eight, the Brandon Comprehensive Plan. I believe you guys all got emailed a copy that Patrick has worked on.
So conceptionally for the comp plan, it's, I've been working on writing up some questions just... I've written drafts of three surveys, ones for residents, ones for developers, land developers, builders, Hague, whoever else in town is a builder, and that'll be home builders to everything that makes huge buildings. And then there's a business owner survey, because business owners probably have a unique perspective. Each of those groups should have a unique perspective that hopefully the comp plan will have input of everyone, whereas just sending one survey to everyone with the same questions probably isn't the most effective way to get different opinions, because everyone's concerns are different. So those are in progress. I sent those out to the Planning Commission. The resident one is quite a bit longer, so hopefully we can narrow it down. So I'm sure the, the longer it is, the less likely people are to finish it. So we'll try to find the right balance of... You don't want to ask too little, because then you don't really get anything meaningful. But we want to try to come up with a plan that reflects everyone's understanding and thoughts and what people want. So I sent drafts out to planning and zoning, some responded with comments. So I'm open to their thoughts, and once these are more finalized, they'll be public. It's just difficult to, if you have 800 different versions floating around, that tends to just
So...
create a whirlwind of...
One of the questions Brian had was, how are you going to administer this survey?
So that is something we are talking about at the staff level. From the business owner part of it, the chamber has a far deeper reach than I do, so we might work with them. Obviously, not every business owner is a member of the chamber, though. So that would require probably some legwork on our end. We'll probably, the city has its means of distributing surveys. Tammy's working on one for the transportation plan. We'll probably put it out that way. We can have paper copies at City Hall if people want to fill those out. It probably doesn't work to print out 11,000 of them and send them out.
What?
Because that's, seems like a, quite a waste of trees and money and everything else.
There's only like 4,500 households.
And if we want to get everyone to impact, we have 11,048 people.
And as an example, how many questions do you have right now?
So the resident survey in its current form is 43 questions.
Oh.
And we're trying to narrow that down, because no one wants to sit there for 20 minutes and fill out a survey.
Okay.
So the other ones are far shorter, but if developers or business owners or residents, my insight probably can't capture everything that's important to you. So if there's something you really would like us to ask or get a perspective on, feel free to send me an email, and we can do our best to try to get a good sample of questions that'll lead us to hopefully a good result on the comp plan.
And you think this survey will come out when?
Um, I imagine the City Council will probably want to take a look before it goes out. Assuming there's not a whole lot of comments from this group, we'll, I'll put in the ones we have, send it out to the City Council, get their feedback, probably talk about it again at a staff level, especially to narrow down what's really important, what's not. And then probably in the next month or so, we'll formally begin the comp plan process. The survey will probably be out. We'll try to get a good window, even though most people complete surveys the second they come out or at the last minute. So it's hard to, we'll, we'll have a window, it's probably a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And then we'll move towards actual, using the survey towards writing the comp plan.
Okay. Melissa?
People will be able to fill out the survey online?
I hope so. My current drafts are all in Survey Monkey. The city does have a Survey Monkey account, and we'll use our Textidly and whatever else we have to send out a link, probably on Facebook would have a link as well. So we will do our best to make sure it can get to most people that want to do it.
Any other questions about that? Anyone? No? Okay. Item number nine, this, you got lucky tonight, man. This is like 30 minutes. This could be two hours some nights. The Hockey Association. Come on up. Let us know what's on your mind.
Hit that button that says "talk." There you go. My name is Tom Gruenick. I live at 1901 South Arch St. Circle in Sioux Falls. I'm the president of the Hockey Association, Brandon Valley. We're here to come forth to proceed with our project. We would like to start the process of building our new indoor rig down at the location at the park.
Okay. So if I remember correctly, we would need to change some language in our institutional zone for it to allow a building to be built that is not city-owned?
Correct. So we were looking through the definitions we have. The one that stood out in general business is commercial recreation facility. The problem there is the Hockey Association is a nonprofit. By definition, commercial recreation facility is run as a business. There's business motivation is profit, whereas a nonprofit is not. So there's a little bit of a conflict. You could always argue about what the definition of a business purpose is, but going that way, then you look at the institutional district, a lot of it is centered on government building or facility. A nonprofit probably doesn't follow the definition of governmental, public park, again, is publicly owned, governmental, most likely. Everything else doesn't quite fit, house of worship, library, school, cemetery, utility facilities, electrical substation, municipally-owned wastewater treatment facility. So we would need to add, come up with a use for this, as well as the Wellness Center that is looking to locate in Aspen Park as well. And I'm working with staff to come up with a definition for either one or both of those, however we can, if we can get them all into one definition and one use, that's probably easier. If we need to make them two, we'll go that way. But what we're looking at is potentially whatever we come up with being a conditional use. The logic behind there to start is, we do have institutionally-zoned land that is not city-controlled. You could have a church with a very large lot, and then if that is a permitted use, that, I don't know if that's something, a route that's acceptable for the city, then the, it's a permitted use, so we can, we have our setbacks, we could just, we have, we can go height with setbacks and no review at the city level, that's in-depth, like a conditional use requirement.
I think a conditional use makes plenty of sense when it comes to this.
And of course, there's that fee involved that, you know, but I mean, I don't know how else you do it.
That's it? That's it?
Just to make sure there's the.
So you're looking at a, a business, not a business, but a, a building that's going to be owned by somebody other than the city, but built on city property?
The Hockey Association, I think, plans to own the building and the city will own Aspen Park, the land under it.
So you got public property with something owned by somebody else on it.
Correct.
It's not unheard of, am I right?
There, there's ways to do it. Memorandum of understanding and that kind of thing. It, it happens. The city's prepared for it.
Okay.
But from a zoning standpoint, we have a little bit of writing to do.
And that's just to incorporate and allow for these buildings to be built. I like the idea of using a conditional use to prevent the other institutional zones from parcelling off land. I don't think it's unheard of that a city, now, the nice thing about that is if something were to happen and the, and the Hockey Association were no longer to be in that building, the city still controls the land that's under it. Right? So then we would have some sort of understanding about the building that's on our property and what can be do, what can be, it can be used for essentially. Yes.
Mr. Reed would be the expert on all that and probably Christina, but that is my understanding of it.
Yes. I mean, that's the only worry is that if somebody builds a building on city property and then they cease using that building for any reason, can they then turn around and sell it and turn it into a whatever? So we would own the land so that we could control them from turning it into a whatever, if that makes sense. Yep. And you've had these discussions?
Yeah, my understanding is we're having a MOU with the city, like a mutual agreement and then also a property lease agreement for the land.
Yes.
Which we could clarify that information on that.
Mm-hmm.
In addition to definitions, we'll have to go back and look at institutional zone signs. Those are based on frontage. Aspen Park, deep in there, you don't have frontage. You have that very little bit on the corner of Aspen Park that's the frontage. So we'll have to come up with a different standard potentially for this use or those uses generally, but we can talk through that in March.
We're, we're not going to have any advertising, just, just the name of the rink.
Yeah, that, but that's a sign in our language, so.
Yep.
Yeah, whatever you put on there.
Right.
We don't want to have another sign discussion. They're very difficult.
Well, I have no problem with it at all, but in fact, I was just up in Canada a month ago, in a town smaller than this, that had a huge hockey rink indoors. And they used that hockey rink for national hockey games. It was so big. And the people, they built it on donations.
Um, but you were in Canada, so that's considered a house of worship?
When it comes to.
It was on public land, is what I'm saying. It was owned by others.
We're, we're gonna have the ice in during the winter hours, obviously, and then we're having it designed to run year-round, but we don't know if we can maintain it yet. For probably the first couple of years, we'll probably try to have other activities or facilities in the, in there, as long as it's okay with the, the park department because it is their land still. But the boards can come out, we can have, it'll be all concrete, so we can have car shows or craft shows or whatever kind of, uh, public type facilities down in this huge building. Yep.
Well, the management use of the facility will be up to you guys.
Correct.
As long as it's happening inside the building.
Correct.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on that or any other questions?
The parking for this building will also be, who will own the parking?
Um, the city will own it, but it's not necessarily known if the city will maintain it.
It all comes down to the terms of the memorandum of understanding, who is responsible for what.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? No?
That's it.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other numbers on this page, so I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I saw a move.
Motion of second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:03. No doubt. No, it's not a record.
No.